Meeting to the fourth, it is six eleven P M. Your call, trustee Altamirano.
Present.
Trustee Vanda. Absent. Trustee Estes.
Present.
Trustee Hernandez.
Present.
Trustee Sotomayor.
Present.
Trustee Sotomayor, Moyer, I apologize for messing up your name. Would you like to meet with us in the presence of the leaders?
Oh, sure. Okay. Please stand. And again.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and universal with liberty and justice for all.
Addressance to the agenda, the library board will discuss the order of the agenda. May amend the order and urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items and request consent calendar items be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. The library board may also remove items from the consent calendar prior to that portion of the agenda. For perfect, for purpose of the official city record, the library board may take care of these issues by entertaining a formal public comment. There is a time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the library board on these matters. Is there anyone here wishing to address the matters? Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the library board concerning any item within the board's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. At that time, state your name and address for the record. President reserves, reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the library administrator's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. Our first item is a presentation. And this presentation, this presentation is regarding our summer programming at the library. And today is Tuesday, so Monday was our first day that we started our lunch at the library program. And next. He trusted me to know I'm, we don't have to do this. On that, there you go. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we started our lunch at the library program this, this yesterday. And we serve fifty, up to fifty children. We have fifty meals each day, Monday through Friday. And we received yesterday and today, we received a great amount of people in the library and they definitely did overflow into the library, taking advantage of checking out books and, and activities and all the special materials that we have to offer here at the library. Next week, uh, next sun, uh, next Monday, our summer reading begins and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We follow the I read reading program and they have a theme every year. So we'll go to the next. We do have our monthly calendars posted already, June, July and August. Our lunch at the library program is a nine-week program. So it runs from June tenth until August ninth, August ninth. And our lunch, our library reading program runs June seventeenth and ends with a party on August second. Along with that, we have our regular programming. We have our sprout story time, which some of our lunch at the library interns will be assisting with for work experience. We have our video game night, our ancestry class, our chess club, our silver screen book club, which are older adults who read a book together and then they watch the film at the end of the, once they finish the book at the each month. Uh, we are fortunate, fortunate enough to have the libraries on the spectrum program. Recently, the county was thinking that they would not receive funding to continue the program. And our mayor recently signed a letter of support for them to continue receiving the program, money for, for the program. So all the city libraries provided that letter of support and so they'll continue providing programming in all the libraries. And then we also have the raise a, raise a reader program, which is provided by the Imperial County. I have not heard any information yet if that's going to be continued or not, if funding is available. Uh, we also have our adult literacy, family literacy and our English as a second language and computer literacy classes that are very popular right now. So the first program that I'm going to talk about is a lunch at the library. And there are five components that you can apply for funding and we applied. Staff applied for four of the components for the programming. And that included to be a lunch at the library meal site. And so that is serving the mills at the library along with activities and programming. A farm to summer programming, which provides connects the families to locally sourced sustainable food and provides hands-on food education and enrichment activities, pop-up libraries at community meal sites and youth development. This is a video. I apologize, I should sit right next to you. This is the video that was created in twenty twenty-two. This will look familiar to trustee Altamirano, but it's a it's a nice video with our state librarian talking about the lunch at the libraries and the importance of it. Okay, okay. So it didn't save as a, a video, so. It, it's on YouTube, so if you ever want to look it up on YouTube, it's, it's a really nice message about what the programs provides. Are the core program is a lunch at the library program. So this is just a couple of snapshots I got today. We have, we have a partnership with the Imperial Unified School District to provide the USDA summer mills. So they can come out Monday through Friday to provide and provide fifty mills. So we can serve those at the library. And our five interns from the leadership program serves those mills. They've been trained how to appropriately handle food. And, and then they also provide programming activities. Are. Today? I'm sorry. How many came today? I did not see the, yeah, yeah. Um, we have, they were in and out. Did that, the, this one photo, it probably shows, you know, because you have parrots in there. Um, but they were circulating in and out. Um, I did not see any leftover food. So, uh, and we'll get into that about any leftover food that's not eaten. And then, um, one, one new item that's different from our pop-up. Uh, in twenty twenty, we provided pop-up library, um, lunch at the library, which was during the COVID. So we went to the school districts and handed out, um, materials. So activities and free books. So this is a different type of pop-up library where um, one of our staff worked to, um, worked with our city attorney and the city manager to have a MO, MOU, um, set with Pacific Southwest Community Development Corporation, uh, which has two affordable living properties. And so we are, we go to these apartments once a week. So that's twice a week that staff visits these apartment complexes. So they bring the food with them, uh, they provide the food to the children and they bring activities to them as well. So it's, it's where we're extending outside of the library as well. That's one of the missions for the libraries is your, you know, you're providing programs inside the library, but you also want to reach, reach out to those who can't come to the library. The next component, component of the program is youth development. The very first picture you'll see is Liz Livano. She is our literacy coordinator. She is the person who wrote this, applied for this grant and is implementing the grant. So she, um, she is working with, she's selected five interns. The interns have been attending training, which that they needed to account on to take like blood, bloodborne pathogens. They clean, they, they clean the restrooms. They, um, they serve food, so they have their health card. And then at each week, they have a, a leadership training opportunity. In addition to that, uh, they have some, they're, they're broken up into groups, so they're learning specialized programs. So one is engineering where they are constructing a hydroponic fountain. Another is composting. So any leftovers that we have from our, our lunch at the library program, we have a composting bin. So the master gardeners are going to be working with this team and composting the, um, the leftovers, scraps, and then teaching them about composting. The, um, another portion of the youth development is gardening. So we have two indoor hydronic, hydroponic gardens inside the library. And so they are going to be maintaining the chemical level and, and planting and harvesting the lettuces in those, in those gardens. And, and then with leadership, we, we have a program where the participants, um, the, the youth development participants, the interns, they'll be assisting the participants of the lunch at the library program with their reading skills. And then, um, another leadership opportunity is to assist with the sprout story time. Um, so that, you know, the ones, the ones that like working with little, the littles will enjoy those times. And, um, and then work experience, they are setting up, they're cleaning up. And as I mentioned, they're cleaning the restrooms. They're cleaning the kitchen. Um, and you know, that's, that's learning, that's, that's life. And, and then they're providing lunch service and, um, and then they're also assisting with the programming and at the library pop-up sites. And so those successful interns that serve all nine weeks through August ninth is they will receive a scholarship for fifteen hundred dollars, which is funded through the California State Library. And, uh, that lands on a Friday, which is right before the Tuesday of our next regular scheduled meeting in August. So, um, we will cross our fingers that we can provide, do a presentation um, if, if they're not leaving for college by then. So we'll, we'll do a presentation. And then our, and I'll, I'll try to start talking a little bit more quickly because I know you guys had a long training. Uh, our theme this year for I read, summer reading program is read, renew, repeat. So it goes along with everything that we're doing with the lunch at the library. And so this is our banner that will be going outside this week, outside of our library. And, um, one next week, uh, which you guys, some of you might want to come out. We have Lee Davis, uh, who used to work at the Imperial County Office of Education for the superintendent. And she is a master gardener and a specialist with bees. And, um, so she is going to come and she's going to teach some classes about beginners in beekeeping and, um, one other program that's another beekeeping for beginners. And, um, and so we have programs that are specifically aged, they're broken up. We have our zero to five, which is going to be served through the sprout story time that meets each week. Then we have our six to twelve-year-olds, our thirteen to eighteen-year-olds. And then our eighteen and up for adults. So all ages are being served. And then if you come in, we might give you, um, we'll have some bee antennas and you guys can some have the little queen on there, so you can. So the, these are just a few flyers that, um, will be going out for the six weeks. We have our, our beekeeping, uh, this is for the six to twelve-year-olds, the beekeeping, the container gardening. Um, they'll, the wildlife lottery, uh, make your own fairy garden, which, uh, they'll be learning about. What a, what a fairy garden actually is, that fairies aren't real, but they're mushrooms, they, they form a garden. Um, and then the build a button. I, I is in there. That's for an older age group. And then the flower power sun catchers is for the six to twelve-year-olds. And these are all planned by all our, our staff. So our six to twelve-year-olds is being provided by one of our literacy, literacy assistants, Julia. And this, um, program is for I believe adults. Yeah, adults. And this is being provided by our library librarian. Um, she put this together. So, um, there will be the beekeeping, um, for beginners that will be led by our, our professional. We won't be bringing any bees inside. Uh, the container gardening one oh one, uh, which is the same as, um, the other class, which is being provided by a master gardener. And then, um, an eco-friendly cleaner program, a movie night, honeyland, a bad art night, and then a stitch swap. During this time, during it for social media, uh, these are just a few ads that will be placed on our social media sites, um, promoting, um, eco-friendly activities or knowledge for people. So it talks about the different type of bees, um, the endangered animals, self-care, the fairy rings in real life, as we mentioned. What is real fashion? And then container advertising books that we have available for container gardening. And then of course, for the summer reading challenge, uh, all, everybody, um, is registering that, that we're limited to fifty people for our lunch at the library, but the summer reading program is open, open to everybody. Um, so we have our, our logs that, um, the little ones will take care of, which they have the little claws, so they color each, um, board book that they read, or if they read a book, they get to color, um, color the main portion of the paw. And, and then, um, the older groups will fill out the books that they read. Each week they will be bringing these into the library and they will be receiving, um, small, small prizes. You know, they can choose from the prize box, you know, so to reward them for, you know, their reading. And then at the end of, and then we have in and out, you get a free hamburger if you're an adult. So we have in and out. Certificates from them, um, that they provided us. And then also, um, we're part of a co-op, which is the Sarah Library Cooperative, 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 uh, which is San Diego and Imperial County. And each year they get, um, museum, um, tickets for our readers. And so we print these passes for our readers as well. So if they're able to go to San Diego, San Diego, they can go to the natural history museum and the auto museum. Went fast.
Question, are we still helping the food bank on Fridays with the backpack program?
Um, unfortunately, the backpack program is not available this year. There, the, um, the coordinator did look into, um, maybe coming up with her own backpacks. But there just wasn't enough time to come up with a program like that. So that's something we'll plan ahead of time for next year and have a backup program. There are, there, there are opportunities with the family literacy program. We were thinking about during the month of August, when we have our family, family literacy night, putting backpacks together for going back to school. Um, and having, you know, have all the essentials and the backpacks for them. So, um, but no, um, like the, um, food bank isn't offering that this year. Let's see. Okay. So now it's time, um, for the selection of our new president. We are opening nominations for, for the president. At this time, I now, I am now accepting nominations for board president. I need a nomination and a second please.
I nominate Mia Hernandez.
I second.
I second.
Yeah, cause we're not on the screens, yeah. So I'll take a roll call. So I have Hernandez who nominated, um not, or excuse me, Estes. Trustee Estes nominated. Trustee Sotomayor. So trustee Altamirano? Trustee Estes? Trustee Hernandez? Apologize, um trustee Sotomayor. Thank you. We now have our president. And you are already sitting in, no, no. So then, at this time, right? I, at this time, I am now accepting nominations for board vice president, I need a nomination in a second please.
We didn't talk about it.
Does anyone wanna be vice president before we nominate?
Just nominate.
I'm new.
I'm okay.
A coin, I guess.
For example, what happened with my, so I am reap- reappointed now, that's.
Today is the eleventh and tomorrow is the last day for applications to be submitted.
That, I think that's a technical thing.
And, and let me walk all of you through it, just so you know, i- if we follow, if you serve your whole term. We follow the rules, we still open it up for applications, but we don't advertise or anything. Um and so you just resubmit when it comes, hopefully you all want to. Uh resubmit and then the appointment gets made by the council, so you'll, you'll be put back in. And in the event we don't get the timing right on our end, if you're, we would hope you'd serve up until the point where someone else replaces you. If there's a unexpected vacancy, it takes another week or two, we just put it in the paper, you know, and advertise. You'll be reappointed.
That's okay, but it's, I'm just talking about the technicality for the vice presidency right now. That, that little thing, so perhaps Valentina is a better choice.
So then, um I nominate Valentina Estes as vice president.
I second.
Okay, uh nom- do we have to vote on them?
Yeah.
Roll call. Uh trustee Altamirano?
Yes.
Trustee, um trustee Estes?
I abstained.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
And trustee Sotomayor?
Yes.
Nominations are now closed. And to um go back on that, we had, the nomination was by trustee.
Hernandez?
Hernandez and seconded by trustee Altamirano. Emotion passes. Board, no, three and one abstain. So now, any remarks?
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you for trusting me. I'm, I'm excited to see what we bring, um obviously, we've seen a lot of good things at the library and I'm excited. For what comes this summer and it's gonna be full and a lot of littles and big ones running around and enjoying the food. I'm excited, we'll do great things. Um let's, does anyone else have any comments or?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I been in the library last summer, it was a very incredible job what you guys did. Um I seen what you guys are doing, I'm, I'm really excited to see that we are bringing more to the adult community. To be at the library, so you guys are pushing it more, I, I really appreciate that.
I am, I am going to go ahead and place the vice president.
I was gonna say, yeah, definitely. You're fine. We'll do it the next time. You really move once. Make sure you write good notes, we're gonna ask you next week.
Thank you, Amber. Alrighty, so we'll move on to reports, do we have any staff reports? Um I submitted the staff report via email, but I also printed it for you, so you have that before you. Just in case you wanna keep it in your binder or if you need to refer to it to ask any questions. I'll um go over a little bit. In May, over Mother's Day weekend, it was a great surprise that um our, our public services. They, they were willing to come out over the weekend and um demo the circulation desk. And the, the library, uh the permanent computer station. Um took all of that out and then install, saved the city about at least fifteen, at least fifteen thousand dollars. By installing the carpet themselves, um and then installing, um s- you know. Of course, it costs the city, you know, it, there is a cost to um the wages. But um it, it saved, saved the library. Funds um to install the circulation desk and install the carpet and we're very grateful to them and the IT team. Because the IT, T-team was down there as well, making sure that ser- services were not impacted. As greatly as they could have been. Um we, I received a phone call from FedEx, um with the, we should be receiving. Our computer table next week, so that will be um set up. Uh the computers that the IT purchased, that's re- um reported on this um report. Um are, are, have already arrived and they're ready to be installed. And so that was all approved by our city manager and that was coming from the CUP, which we've talked about um funding sourced. Um so it's doing a great benef- benefit um for the community. Um some additional items that we um recently purchased. Um our children's area is very, very popular and it's doing exactly what it's supposed to do. Children are engaging, they're having fun, parents are engaging, they're having fun. So uh we recently purchased some acoustic panels and their leaves. Um that goes along with the theme of, of the uh early learning room and those will be suspended from the ceiling. And um it looks like it will be pretty simple to do stuff, I thought we could probably do it and um I recommended. That we would go ahead and stay with public services. Makes their, they're amazing and they're professionals. We were also um with the number of children that were um having to visit the library. We um purchased another children's table um to place in the children's area and some more chairs. And that was provided, all these purchases have been provided through the CUP, um funding for benefit of the community, good. We. Placed um our smart TV, uh where it was originally planned. Um so that can be, have rotating messages um and videos um to get people's info, um. Attention to see what kind of programs that are being offered here, here at the library, we want to reach them every, which, which way possible. We have papers everywhere that people can pick up, but digital, it catches their attention, so. We have that digital TV, uh that, that smart TV to provide those, that, the messaging board. But then also, it's, it will be available for programming, um so it can be after hours, um before hours. I'm just depending on the time of the day, weekends, um since we're closed on weekends, it gives an opportunity to provide um hands-on learning. And, and it's, it's a nice little small area where people can, can connect and even have, um watch a movie to, if it's a book club. Watch a movie together, it's a really nice area. And um I'm, it was reported that our, we had two part-time literacy coordinators. Uh one that was with us for fourteen years, she worked both for the county and for the city of Imperial. And she um received a full-time job at the county as a literacy coordinator. And she had been doing that for a while and so um she, she resigned because. There's only, only so many hours in the day. And then um our, our other literacy coordinator for the family literacy services. She rece- received a full-time job at the county as well, uh through social services, which was her heart, obviously, if she's serving. Family services, so um we're really happy for them, we miss them. Um we reevaluated the budget and, and looked at the monies that have, have been coming in. And that are coming in uh for this next fiscal year, that provided enough funding to um. Um hire a full-time literacy coordinator. Um um so that literacy coordinator has been hired, uh we're just waiting on one last. Um with the background checks to go through and um she will be joining us um hopefully next week. So um there will be a lot of amazing, we have a lot of amazing programs going on right now with the literacy. But even more uh amazing programs, we have a great team of volunteers and, and interns that are working for the literacy. And so there's a report on the literacy services, the English as a spe- um second language. I provided the calen- the current calendar that we have for the literacy, we have computer literacy classes that are being offered right now. Um the people are amazing, um they're, they've been. If you're ever inside the library and they're having a class, um they welcome you, they, it's just wonderful people. Our zipbooks, uh we, which is a good thing, we spent all of our monies that we refunded for the zipbooks. We finished that money, um spending the money in May and the application is due this week. Um for the funding that starts July one. Um so that will be submitted hopefully tomorrow. Yes, tomorrow, it will be diff- um submitted tomorrow. And as you are aware, you are aware, the scheduled vacancy uh for the library board of trustees is open until um the twelfth. And uh then on Friday, uh the person being appointed will be notified via email from the city. Uh so um that person can attend the library, or excuse me, the city council meeting uh to be appointed. And I had a long, uh you could tell I was, was working in the storage, um storage shed for. I put a lot of, was putting a lot of work in there, I had a lo- a long ride up on that. Uh but we're, we're going through um the storage, um we have, we have some items that were placed in storage uh in twenty twenty-two. And there's quite a, quite a few old items in there that need to be identified as um surplus or was already identified as surplus. So we need to determine with those and then a lot of um old documents that uh we need to go through the procedure, the policy procedure of, of. Um destroying those um records or retaining those records. And then we have the numbers, I won't go through the numbers with you. Uh the patron served during the month of May, um please let me know if there's any other numbers that you'd like, like for us to pull up. Um our librarian has been ordering a great amount of different. Um topics of books of non-fiction, um fiction, um books for children. Um Spanish titles and, and adults and I'd, I don't wanna overwhelm her by. Requesting a report to break it down by each category, but there's a lot of great categories that she's um, um. Has been ordering and that our city manager has been approving. Uh below our um, with the literacy room, uh with the storage, the literacy room became. Pretty much a storage room during twenty twenty, um since peo- uh classes weren't meeting in person. And um the library was built in, this current library was built in nineteen fifty-seven with a small. Closet that's outdoors and not climate-controlled, that was the only storage that the library has. Uh through the, through the pandemic, we were able to create a small storage room. By knocking out an old bathroom and an old kitchenette from, that was built in nineteen fifty-seven and built a quarantine room. Now that we're not using that as a quarantine room um or a processing room, um because there's no, there's no circulation in that room. We're um utilizing that as a storage room for daily and weekly items that are needed. And then the stor- the climate-controlled unit that we're renting, uh will be holding the items that we need monthly or annually. So it makes sense to, you know, um have those items there. And um we purchased uh weather-tight storage um containers to. Keep our materials in, so they're safe from, from being contaminated. Um so the literacy room, this is, these are, um we have a little bit of money um from our, our, our. Our grant, um and the end of, end of the grant period is June thirtieth. And I've been working with um a company on trying to, since April. Uh trying to see if this design of chairs and tables will fit in the small room that we have. And along with this um s- storage unit that has the whiteboard, um that goes in front, so it's double purpose. So they have storage, but they also, they do use the whiteboard, so they have the whiteboard. And then um this round table, it's an inclusive table where everyone is able to sit easily. Here and see and communicate with each other, so um we're still waiting on that design to see if that will fit. And then American Library Association, the conference, we have three staff who will be attending that. And um we have Alejandro Banda, our trustee, who will be attending on Sunday as well. So um I look forward to that. And then uh summer reading program was the last part of the report, which uh was part of our presentation.
I can't wait to see the library. It's been a long time coming and we toured it last time and the stationary desks being gone just completely transformed it. Um so I can't wait, you know, I'm sure it'll be a celebration, so everyone can come and see it, cause it's gonna be good.
Um I was just, I, I know, I know you said that um. Uh the new books that have been ordered, um several different, you know, uh different categories, but. Do you think um in, in snow rush or anything, we could see like the top three, I'm really interested in to see, see what top three to- topics, you know?
I think that's a great report to provide you, so um it's been something that I've been hinting at because I, they're very busy right now. But I think it's really important to provide because there's a, a lot, we've been getting compliments from the patrons. About the, the books that are there, because they went through a, a real strong weeding process. Bringing back, you know, some up, new books, you know, new releases, but then also updated in, information. That's something you definitely want to weed out.
And then, yeah, it would be nice and to see, you know, how that affects the activities in the library and what new ones could, or you know, better insight. and what new ones could sort, you know, better insight.
I'll put that on for the next report.
Um a, I guess, suggestion? Um I would love to see if there's anything we can do, and I may have already brought this up before, but maybe not. Um with the garden, uh doing like a kids. We used to do it before, there were like cooking classes, but maybe like theme it around different cultures. Um kind of showing them how to use produce, yeah, different foods and.
From the garden.
From the garden, yeah, veggies obviously is like the big thing, cause that's, but I think that would be cool. Um because a lot of kids, if we don't show them, who will? You know, sometimes parents just don't get to do that and they don't know how to cook for themselves. So just a little life skill, I feel like that could be a really fun little program. Do we have trustee reports?
I'll go ahead and answer really quickly to that. Um the component of the lunch at the library, library is um farm. I, I have to look back at that. The farm to table. Farm, I, I keep wanting to say farm to table, farm, farm to summer. And they, they are doing a little bit of that um with summer, some of the produce, you know, of course, um you know, we'll have to. Well, it's summertime. But um they, the children will, that, that is part of the component of, of the farm to summer. So we have, there are some cooking classes, they had a pot on Monday, they um had a pasta class. So, and that's always fun. So um but they'll be, um as time goes by, the, the the interns will be um harvesting some of the produce and providing that for the programs. But yes, but continue with that, definitely, that's part of the plan.
Yeah, cause they realize that like pasta, it's flour, maybe eggs, water, and they're like, what? It blows their mind. And that's what it is, you know, food isn't complicated and I feel like, especially for certain um like are, are disadvantaged kids, right, that they have maybe ingredients, but they don't have items. And they figure out they can make a meal from the little bit that they do have, so that would be cool, that would be very cool.
We do have, sorry. During this sprouts reading time, do, is there, is it open to, let's say, different organizations to come in and do storytime with kids? Um the people that would be willing to, let's say, no, other nonprofits that want to uh focus on, you know, um education literacy in children. Um would the library be open um to working with them?
Yes, I would, I, I would. Um we did have, um in the beginning, back in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, ICOE. Um their early childhood um education program. Um came out and provided uh early learn, um they provided the storytime and then they provided the resources um about their programming. So um it was, it was a great partnership. So um it's always something that um libraries always say yes, and then we look to the city of tiny.
Just asking for uh organization, I know.
I don't think I, I mean, I don't think I have anything to report. What was the last thing we did? I think the ribbon cutting, have we had a meetings? Oh, the training, yeah, we just did a social media legal, I don't even remember the title, but it was a social media training, so that was great.
Then we did like the library training?
The library training.
Oh, yeah, the library training. Yes, yep, yep. Oh yeah, a lot of changes. No, I'm just excited, I'm excited for what, what's to come, um. I think it'll be good, I think the community is gonna love what's coming. Hopefully we can get more, more people in here to join all that fun.
You definitely hear the comments as they come in. The removal of those two units and the carpet, I definitely opened it up. And then as we continue moving forward. You know, we're, we started with the early learning room, which was in the corner and we went on, went on, well, the teen room. And then started with the children's area and pushing out. So um there's some, um some, there's some additional furnishings that we're looking at that um people are currently utilizing that's not part of our furnish- furniture. It's for their game tables, but people are really using those. So that identified that we needed um some square tables for people to sit at. So um some, some of those have been identified. Working with the city manager on, um procuring, procuring those. I'll, I'll send you an email. Once we get our quote.
The process. And, and one thing right now you said about comments, I remember I was in here maybe three or four months ago and I was at one of the back tables in the adult section. Um and there was high schoolers, because they were working on an assignment, I reckon, I recognized the teacher's name. Um and they were just so giddy and excited and wanted to know like, how can we volunteer here, like how can we work here? So maybe, I mean, if we work with the high school being like, hey, our opportunities are coming up. Let's specify this to our juniors and seniors or sophomores even. Um I feel like we have a never-ending supply of those who are interested and it's, they're there. So that might be a good idea for, for next year. Um but I mean, I think we're pretty much done, right? Does anyone have any additional comments? So then, um the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Imperial Public Library is Tuesday, um July ninth. And this meeting is adjourned at seven PM.